It's 9:02, we're gonna call this Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Is Mr. Bradford or Sheriff Patton gonna give us our invitation?
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord God. Thank you for being our join, our strength. Thank you for allowing us to see the other day, that we care on this business of the day. Let us be peaceful, Lord God, and get out wherever we need to get out. That all hearts and minds be satisfied after whatever decisions are made, Lord God. We just pray, Lord God, that things will be done in a right and just way as we conduct the business of Adams County, Lord God. And as we continue to push through whatever tough issues may come up today, Lord God, we just wanna keep you first in all that we do, because we know when we do that, everything will be alright at the end of the day. These are meaningful blessings we ask of you, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thanks, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm still a roll call right quick. Mr. Gray. Ms. Hutchins. Mr. Gaines. Mr. Middleton. I am here. Ms. Dean. Ms. Lewis. Mr. Slower. And Ms. Washington. All present and countercall. Alright, I need a motion to approve the docket. Move by everybody. Move by Mr. Middleton and second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion curious. Special presentations of any? Would all these people in this room right now, Paul, if I could, that Scott? Okay. Do we have a representative? Is it Great River? Would you like to speak? Somebody here want to call the committee?
Hello, everyone. Aaron Silas here, representing for Great River Utility Operating Company. We wanted to come and give you guys an opportunity to ask us some questions. We have a sign-up sheet that Ms. Carter has, who's our Director of Customer Experience. We've been told that we can use a conference room to have one-on-one conversations with any customers who would like to do so, or were available to answer questions.
Okay. On the sign-up sheet, I'm sure just about everybody, but about ten people in here are here for you. So you can pass it around. You can start right there on the back row. I think that lady in the back corner is probably one of them.
So we also have business cards with phone numbers as well for the utility company. So we'll pass that around, but if there's any questions that you all have, I'm here to answer this.
Yes, Mr. Gray.
You have to be recognized by the President, and then he'll let you speak. And it's only one person speaking at a time, and try to speak. I know you're gonna be asking questions with each other, but you're really trying to direct it towards the board. That helps keep people from confiding.
Mr. Gray, you share something?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'm just gonna try to go back and with some history of Oakland Water Works LLC. I know in 2007, Mr. Huber came before the Board of Augment and wanted them to...
Everybody please silence your phone, if you don't mind.
And wanted them to purchase his sewer at the time, and I think the Board of Augment agreed to purchase his sewer. And my concern is, when I... When I looked on the internet and found out that it says that the Mississippi State Department of Health gave Oakland Water Association some options. Option one was to sell to a public water supply. Option two was to purchase 100% of their water from a public water supplier. Option three was to install treatments on the existing well. And option four was to get a new well. And I think Oakland decided to sell... No, Oakland decided to buy water from the Natchez Water Work, and then it turned around and sold it to Great River. Now here go my concerns, that I've been hearing from the people that live in the area that's affected. Maybe y'all helped me out. Broadmoor, which don't have nothing to do with y'all, water bill is $50. Adams County, that water bill is no more than $50. I brought my own personal water bill, my water bill, not garbage, just water, is $24. And from the bill that I got from Great River, the last one was $107.
They don't read the major.
So, we'll get to that. Hold up, hold up. So my concern is this. Are y'all charging them a flat rate? Everybody the same rate?
Yes, sir.
Is that legal?
Yes, sir.
For charge everybody the same rate, whether they use the water or not, they getting charged for it?
Yeah, so what happened whenever Great River purchased the utility from the previous owner, they were being charged a flat rate then as well.
Y'all are gonna get a chance to speak.
Understood. So we are regulated by a utility commission, and there's something called a tariff, which represents what we're allowed to charge legally to the customers. The tariff did not have a usage component to it. So if Oakland was charging a usage rate, they were doing so against said tariff. The tariff that we adopted whenever we purchased the system was completely flat. And we have to utilize what's in that tariff, because we're regulated by that commission. So, you know, it is legal. What we are doing right now, we entered into an agreement with the commission and their staff on this, is we've chosen a select number of households to test the meters that are there, get them back up and running, and then replace the meters that are registering incorrectly. And so that is the plan for the Oakland community, is to test and replace the meters so that we can start charging a usage rate in the hopefully near future.
Okay, okay.
You mean to tell me that the meters don't work, and you just charging what you wanna charge?
The state's letting them do that.
So at this time, because it was that flat rate, we don't know the full extent of the metering issues in the community. So we're testing them right now and charging a flat rate in the meantime, yes.
Okay, my next question, I'm gonna let somebody else talk. My concern is this. Y'all buying water from the Natchez Water Work, and they do your sewers. Natchez Water Work is charging the fee for sewered-in water. Y'all charging the fee for sewered-in water. Y'all double charging. Y'all the middleman. And I talked to somebody else in another area, and for some reason, if possible, the middleman need to be cut out, because they can't continue to pay $107 for water. And the people right across the street from them is paying $50. That don't make sense to me, and that don't make sense to the ones that paying $107.
Can I let you off here?
I got it, I got it.
Sir, how long have y'all owned that system?
We've owned it for a little over two years, sir.
And in two years, you not made correct meters?
So... Sorry.
Now, go ahead, please answer.
Yeah, so what we've really been kind of focusing on over the last two years, we have a number of systems in the state of Mississippi. Whenever we enter into a state, what we focus on first is the treatment plant, so the treatment of the water, making sure that people are getting safe, healthy, and reliable water. So the metering component, which is really the distribution system. So to harden back to something that was mentioned about the middleman. Basically, we purchase water from Natchez Water Work, and we own the distribution system, which is the lines that take it from that plant all the way to the homes. The distribution system comes about two to three years in, and so that's why we're kind of focusing on that now. So first is the treatment of the water, making sure that it's safe and reliable, and then the distribution system comes after, sir.
Okay. Well, where it's coming from should be safe and reliable. But if you look around this room, most of the people in here are... I hate to use the term elderly, because I'm getting there myself. But with that being said, they're on fixed incomes. And you're charging them, you're just charging them a flat rate, and everybody gets the same rate. Some of these people probably don't use half of the water that you would allow them to use if it was on a regular rate. And pardon the term, but they're getting hosed, and I think they're getting tired of it. And I... If you don't have a plan here today, I really would like to hear your plan of how you're gonna get this down, and how are you gonna compensate them later? When you realize that their bills were a third of what you were charging, and you've been taking all this money from them for two years. Are you gonna give them money back?
Great question. So absolutely, on the plan, right, like I said before, we entered into an agreement to replace all the meters in Oakland. So that is the plan, and we expect to do that. Meters were ordered, I believe, in July for a small subset of the customers to, again, replace, test, and do what's necessary there, with the goal of a long-term metering program over the next year or so. So that's the plan right now. In terms of, you know, compensating customers back, there is a large component of every kind of bill that is a minimum charge. The usage component helps to recover about 30% probably of the total bill. And so there are a variety of options that we can do to help some people out afterwards if we're able to find some usage trends. But a large component of our bills are that monthly minimum charge. And so the average bill is what is calculated in a flat rate, and that's about 2,000 gallons of usage a month. 3,000 is the average across the United States. And so there is a small component that will likely change, but the average bill overall will likely be the same. So there's a variety of options that we can do, and we can definitely talk about how to do that once we get that information.
People that are on fixed incomes tend to be the most frugal people you'd ever wanna see. So their bills, I would wager that most of them, unless they have a leak, would never even reach the minimum, as far as how much water they use. So not only you hurting them on the water side, they're having to pay the sewer as well for something they're not even using. And to me, that doesn't seem fair at all. And I don't blame all these people for being angry. We've got a situation over across near Cloverdale, that we all are handling the sewer, I believe. And I've got the same problem over there with people complaining. I don't know if anybody's here from District Two or not, from that area. But I just... They've been here several times, and this has got my blood boiling a little bit.
My last question is this. See, can I explain this? City of Natchez Water, 1675. City of Natchez Sewer, 1465. So when it come to y'all charging, y'all charged 35, 38 for water, and 33, 21 for sewer. So why y'all charge so much more than what you paying for it and then putting it on them?
That's a great question. So it's interesting how the great design works. The City of Natchez and Natchez Water Work have a large amount of customers to spread their cost over. And so it's really all about that denominator, right? Great River, as a company, has a much smaller customer base, much smaller communities. And so the costs that we incurred to fix the distribution system, the line race, et cetera, are spread over that smaller customer base, and that's why the rates are higher, which has the denominator, the number of connections that we're allowed to recoup that investment from, is smaller.
How many customers do you have?
So in the Oakland community, there are about 300. Statewide, we serve about a little over 20,000 connections. But in the Oakland community, it's 300, right around.
Well, they got the same amount, probably Broadmoor. Broadmoor charge $50. No, they don't even charge $50. They're a little less than $50. So when you say you got a small customer base, they have a small customer base too. That really don't add up. I just think you need to give these citizens a chance.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
Well, I just got a question. I mean, I had a... On last year, before we redistrict, that part was my... Was a lot of my constituency, so we started with Public Service Commission. But I had a question here about, I guess, a month or two ago. I don't know if it was y'all's fault or the City of Natchez's fault. And it caused a lot of high water pressure, caused a lot of people busting pipes, caused high water heaters to go out, and stuff like that. And so, you know... My question to them, how does the customer get charged for a failure on... Had to be, I'm not, I can't, because I'm not there. So it had to be on Great River, or Natchez, or whoever y'all... I guess it'll go back to you, because you're the one sitting the bill. So how does the customer get charged and have to pay for their own mistakes, the mistakes that was made for something that you getting paid for?
That's a great question. If there are any kind of individual... You'll get this on our cards as well. We have an email and a phone number. If there are any individual pipes that customers paid for, they are more than able to do a claim. And what that looks like is, whatever payments they made, they submit that to the email with proof of invoice, and they're reimbursed for that. So if there were, if there's any personal property damage, water heaters, anything like that, that is an option for you all to do.
Did anybody know that in here?
You do not answer your email.
They don't answer emails. That's incorrect.
So for the ones down here, we need to make sure, that's what I can ask. We need some kind of contact, phone number, email, because I don't see some...
No, they won't. They won't answer. I got emails here that y'all would not answer.
I don't, it's some of the citizens that stay there, and some of the ones complaining I don't see. So, and they did a lot of helping, trying to help people go on high water heater, getting fitted and stuff like that. So I need to make sure that they get put out, even if newspapers could write it and let them know that they can be reimbursed for that, because that has been a really, really big thing, a big issue on there. So we definitely need them to have a reachable and an answerable number and answerable email, because we do have a lot of concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. What we can also do is we'll send out a hard copy to the same location that they get their bills. And we can let them know, like customers know about that whole process via that hard copy letter.
Okay. Any chance y'all are willing to sell that operation?
I mean, absolutely. So there are a lot of instances where an entity that is, you know, qualified, has the, what we call the technical managerial and financial expertise to run a distribution system. We have sold systems in the past, so that is definitely an option.
Okay.
Open it up.
Any more questions from the board members? Okay. If anybody that wants to speak, if you'll just stand where you are, and you can just tell us who you are. Raise your hand. Tell us who you are and where you live, and, okay, go ahead.
Denise Jackson, Smith, I stay on Brooklyn, 202 Brooklyn. I contacted commission people. We was told, I was told personally, among with some of the other neighbors in here, that you all wasn't allowed to go up on our bills. Now, you stayed there early, they was legal. But I thought the process was you have to go through a certain process, and one of those is for commission people. So if they advise y'all not to go up on our bill, why are you going up on our bills? And another portion is, you still, well, me personally, I hadn't got the explanation of why. You states that it's a rate, is why you charging us $107 and I not sent one cent from $108. It's still not explainable. And clarification to me, why we're being charged that amount? When we're not exactly like Ricky Gray said today. We don't even use that amount of water, so why are we charging? You saying a rate, and being that it's a small neighborhood, that has anything, nothing to do with it. Before it's our meters, before Great River owned the process of being the ownership of this company, our meters work fine. So I disagree with you saying that our meters are reading incorrect, because that is not true. Because they are reading correct. Now, if you wanna use that to justify why, I beg the difference. You're totally wrong. And it's not, no sense of you all charging us that amount of money. So, you know, when you say it, you might not be in charge that much. But you might not care about your neighbors, which will be us and your customers, but you should. These people are not able, like the elder people, I'm not elderly, but I am still a young lady by myself, and guess what? I'm not able to pay that either. So whether you elderly, young, or however the case may be, it's ridiculous on y'all for the charges that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, definitely. So I heard a couple of questions in there that I wanted to answer. The part about illegally raising the rates, we are in the middle of a process, the legal process to do that. The rates that are currently being charged are interim per final decision. So basically, that just means that there has not been a final decision made. But as part of that process, we are charging the rates legally. So, great question, but the process is being followed per kind of the state guidelines and rules. So, great question. In terms of, you know, not hearing why, basically, Great River started providing water and sewer operations in the state about two to three years ago, and we've acquired, like I said before, about 20,000 connections across the country. What we've done is kind of acquire and fix small dilapidated systems in communities like yours.
I comprehend how that, when you said it earlier, but it still doesn't explain why you're charging us that amount.
When you compare what everybody else is paying, and only our area is paying over $100 nowhere, and Adams County is paying that much money. I got three bills right here. Each one of them are different. And they have steady climbing all the way up to 107 now.
Okay. I'll tell you what I wanna do right now. I realize the Public Service Commission is behind you, and I would like for one of them to speak for just a minute. Will we take any more questions? Absolutely.
Can you do a brief history?
This statement you disagree with, you disagree with the law, and they go...
When I decided to run, I seen this issue coming up. I pointed out in my commercials, the rates were due up. I seen the adjustments that was happening. The previous commissioners did not take that into consideration. The third week is when we put upon, yeah. Not only here in this community, in other communities. I'm hurt here, Steve. I've been in negotiations. The previous commissioner passed it last year, and that rate went into effect. I have been for the first 10 months of my administration, talking and trying to get this fixed. It's a process, and I know that process is a long process. And I meet with them at least once a twice a week. I was out last night in Jackson County on a lift station and went back. I got one 11-second video of a patch job. I understand, man, what you said about your meters. If we had a problem, they knew when they bought it, there was a problem. If they believe that, you're telling me something different. I'm hearing something different. I mean, when we came into our office, we had nothing. The previous commissioner gave us zero contact, zero about anything that was going on with Great River. They're all over the state. We have the same issues everywhere. Commissioner Stamps in the central, Commissioner Brown in the northern. Our problems were impossible. We have a spreadsheet that I get every week that talks about every utility. If you call in, you get a case number. We hear you. They're fighting our best here. They're typing all this up. We're building a case to go back and get these rates repaired. I can't tell you when that's gonna happen, man. I'm very sorry this is happening here. This lady right here reminded me of my mother. She was very poor. In our state, there's 82 counties. 50 counties is classified as rural. This is one of those counties that's rural. Majority of the people in here are rich, living on a fixed income. I understand that. I don't think anyone at that board is on a fixed income. Maybe you won't. But these folks out here are...
We have been.
But I do want y'all to know that my, our staff, the whole commission line is working for too. I don't, I wish I could fix it today, but I can't. The law that they passed last year that we're working to get changed, it's gonna take some time. You know, I've been saying Great River's...
He just got voted in. Ten months.
Great River, when I did the research on them, they came from St. Louis Resort. And so there was a written statement written to the Commission of Missouri. Said, once you go down this process, you can't unstop it. They have the same problem in Louisiana. They're in Louisiana. That's the same problem that's all throughout our state. They're in, I think, 15 states. You go look and do the research on them, they're the same problem everywhere. Their investor home. They gotta pay their investors. I don't think it's why they charging you that much.
What would be your next step? What would be, tell the neighbors of Morgantown, what would be the commission next step toward Great River? If you all, if they call you on, y'all said that they wasn't able to rise and raise the prices on us, what would be the consequence?
They're underneath a bond right now. If we were proving our case, then they would have to reimburse us with that offer. We may have put it underneath the bond.
Yeah, because it's not fair that they bought a contaminated system that doesn't... Yeah, it's not our fault that they bought a contaminated system that doesn't keep the water purified for the neighbors. So in order for them to make a profit, we're paying their cost. Like they [BLEEP] us with no lubrication. So they just, it's just really just insane of how they just really [BLEEP] us with these prices.
And why it's paying Adams County and...
Hold up.
Mr. Carr, first of all, I wanna thank you for coming here today, and it's nice to meet you. I didn't know you. I called Commissioner Stamps. I mean, him have a relationship. You the one gave me your number. But the confusing part to me is this, and I've been in government since 2000. And I thought, you say they changed the law, because I thought the process was you have a public hearing, and all the people come to the hearing, and you talk about these things. I didn't realize you raised people rates and then come to the... You go, come to this, and they say, well, it's on a temporary basis. I ain't never heard that in my life. They changed the law today?
Yes, that was passed last year. We have a hearing... We have a hearing, remember? November to discuss this again. Now, if the commission votes yes, I don't think, you know, it's not looking too positive right now. So if we go the other route, then we would say no. In my understanding, we'd go to a court that would listen to both parties. Now, when we have our hearing next month in Jackson, anyone can come.
When is?
Listen, Jackson, on the 20th of November, 20, I'm sorry.
November 2. What time? Oh, that's the.
And where is it at? Denise Jackson, where?
So let me ask you a question. The legislature going to decide about the bill that they passed?
No, sir. We go to Hans County, I believe, isn't it?
No, 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 I ain't talking about that. I'm saying, you say the legislature passed the bill.
It was the previous commissioner.
Oh, the commissioner passed the bill.
None of them are there now. Well, we have three good commissioners. First time in 80 years we've had a previous commissioner all at the same time.
Now, you said that they were under a bond?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if they couldn't pay back these people what they've overcharged them or something goes wrong here, the bond would kick in. Is it enough to service the debt?
Yes, they're going to have to pay it back. Even out of their interest, probably they have that bond.
Okay, I got a lady on the front with the paper right here. Ricky already asked a question? Okay, all right. Does anybody have any question for the Public Service Commission?
Sir, I'm sorry, this phone starts at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir, yeah.
Hello, my name is George Dixon and I have a house on Brookfield Street. So to your office, we received several letters from Gray River stating that they have submitted rate increases to your office. And so this started in 2021 because I brought the bill, $51.40 when they first took over the meter.
What was your, sorry, what was your bill before?
$51.40 when I moved there in 2020. You know, when they purchased it, it was $51.40, which we only paid one time for the city flood room and we paid for the sewage. After two months of being under their particular carrier, we received a letter from them stating that they had petitioned your office to raise the rate and it went from $51.40 to $62.82. Then two months after that, I got another letter from Gray River stating that they had submitted to your office a meeting and then it went to $78. Then it was like five times we got until we got to 107.40. So my question to you, Mr. Carr, is who is approving the rate increases if they're submitting to your office for that to take place? That's what I wanted to know.
There's saying, they're right there. They're saying that our office, that was previous commissioners' decision, that's in effect. If we vote on it and that's going to go away, I can't necessarily, it's a process and we have to go through it.
Okay.
And we're working as hard as we can, offered commission, to get these rates down. We did the same thing a couple of years ago. Comparing what's going on throughout the place, throughout with every city, I have a spreadsheet that talks about every, 27 counties. So we went in, I'm stat, we went in and seen what other cities were charging and we've done an average. And we're constantly doing, after this constant changing, amount of usage and everything. So we can build our case to get these rates down.
Commissioner Carr, could you do us a favor? Could you just tell us when you got elected? Because a lot of this stuff was before you even got there and you just got elected. So you trying to correct a whole lot of stuff. So could you tell us when you got elected?
In January.
In January. So me personally, I just met Mr. Carr, but my friend Nikita Stamps told me that they was working to trying to do exactly what Commissioner Carr said they was going to do. So I don't know how long it's going to take, but I know it ain't right. And I believe, and it's three of them up there, and I know two of them say they going to work to get it right. That's Mr. Stamps and you just heard Mr. Carr say it. And I guess if they win their argument, then I guess they going to have to compensate the citizens for overcharging them. Now, that's what I think, I don't know.
Also, Commissioner Brown, I understand.
So, Mr. Carr, it sounds like help is on the way for these folks. You can't give us a time of when it's going to be? And I don't know if they're willing to do something in the meantime to cut their bills. If it were me, I would certainly be doing it. But to cut their bills down in the meantime, because it sounds like they're just going to pay it back anyway. I hope the bonds big enough. No, they have, they have them.
They really can.
That's what I'm talking about. So does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Carr? He converts and I'll give it to you, sir. Go ahead. On the wall.
Mrs. Scott.
Well, not for Mr. Carr.
Okay, okay, for Mr. Carr. Anybody else for Mr. Carr? Okay, go ahead. Tell us your name and your address.
Ed Rose, 105 Brooklyn Drive.
If I'm allowed to use 2,000 gallons of water a month and right now I don't touch my toilet when I need to, what happens if we all go up to $2,000, 2,000 gallons a month each? Would they then be allowed to raise the price tariffs on this?
Well, there's a, after 2,000, that's our flat. And if you go above that, it's over.
But I know I ain't using 2,000.
There are very few people I think that are retired, you know.
I water my yard, I water my backyard, now I got to use, I got to.
They don't, because they don't read the meters.
If we all went up to 2,000 gallons, are they going to come back and say, oh, we need another gallon?
They wouldn't know. They don't read them, they wouldn't know.
Well, their bills coming from.
Yeah, the meter, the meter are fine. There's nothing wrong with the meter, they just using it for justification. Yeah, so Mr. Carr, let me get a summary, let me get a summary of what you're saying. So just in case a neighbor contact me. So you're saying that you're working on the deliberation of them overpricing and charging us? And if the case is won, they will have to reimburse us for what we have been paid? And if not, the insurance company will pick up the slack to reimburse us if the case is being won? Okay, I just wanted to get some clarification of that.
Anything else from Mr. Commissioner Carr?
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I've lived out there since.
Mr. Sonny, would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Sonny Stevens. Address is 1300 Horseshoe Drive. I've been out there since 1981. So I've seen a lot of water bills. All of them were between, towards the end, between $40 and $48, all of them. Everybody understands inflation and everybody understands that a lot of your bills are groceries and gas and everything, going up 20 and 30 percent, not 250 percent, which is where we're at, where I'm at now. Mine's gone from the mid 40s to $107 a month. Certainly haven't gotten any better. I don't care if I ever get a dime back, but I'd like to see the bills get in line with where they should be because they're not where they are now. My question, I guess, would be to him, how do you come up with $107? Where'd that come from?
Yeah, okay.
Public Service Commission let them do it.
Just because they elected you.
They're going to stop them though. Look, is there anybody else got any questions for the Public Service Commissioner? If not, we'll let the man from Gray River come back up and if y'all have questions for him? Not that we're not going to ask you to come back, back up. All right, sir.
I got one. We're asking the wrong question.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Walker Bertrand, 2120 Second Street. We're asking the wrong questions here, okay? You bought this system. You as a company didn't have a plan, okay? I know because I got the email. You cannot send me about four hours for your email, four times. What are you doing to fix this, get us out of the three tier system, okay? You either give us the next water work or you fix the system. About what work you have done since 2021, nobody, nobody's answered that. I still haven't got answers. What work has been done on any of this? So we're asking the wrong question. What are you doing as a company to get us out of this system? If you're not, then you're just robbing us, okay? That's all you're doing. And even in my email, I put, I think this is criminal, okay? And I do, because you're not fixing nothing, you haven't had anybody fix nothing. You get water sent into, you ain't doing nothing, you ain't doing nothing. So that's the question, what are you doing? If you're not doing nothing, you're kidding, off the way.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I would love to get your email, it doesn't have to be public, obviously, but I'll take those and I'll look into why you have not gotten a response. But what I can say is for this particular community, there's been distribution system work. So making sure that we attend to the line breaks as possible, make sure that we try and avoid them.
We ain't got no people often.
No way.
No.
So.
I'm complaining about my water meter.
I'm sorry, sir, do you have a man in town?
No.
We have an operations company and a regional manager in Mississippi.
So where they come from, you work on for a problem?
Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, Brookhaven.
Yeah, there's a.
Subcontract.
Do you understand these people's frustration?
I do, yeah. They're, basically, the third-party operations firm has operators kind of across the state to handle all the plants that we operate. And the goal is if there's an emergency, that they're, they live in such a place where they can get to a couple of different locations within an hour of receiving a call. If it's classified as a non-emergency, there's different timelines for the kinds of situations. But we do have operators and then again, a regional manager in the state to coordinate all of that.
He made a very valid point, you know, if I was going to buy something, I would have a plan after I bought it to fix whatever needed to be fixed and have it streamlined as soon as possible. Two years seems like a long time on only 300. That 300 is a small amount, would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's kind of what I was mentioning before, because of our footprint, right? We look at all the systems we own across the state. In the first one to two years, we focused on treatment. So the systems that we acquired that were, you know, providing unsafe drinking water or not treating the waste, we prioritize fixing those systems first and then the distribution system comes a little after.
That argument falls short in the fact that you're getting water from somebody that already has good water and their sanitation system or sewer system is in good condition. So that argument falls way short of explaining to these people why this is going on.
Sorry.
The question he asked is how much of their money you taking and going fixing something else that y'all got somewhere else?
Yeah, correct, Ricky can get it.
So, you know, the, that's a great question. The audit process that we do is across the entire state. So there's no kind of slice of us being able to say this community is, their rate would be this and this community their rate would be this. We truly do look at it across the entire state of Mississippi. So I do not have the numbers to be able to answer that question because that's not how we do the rate design. So great question, but unfortunately, we do look across the entire state.
Okay, Ms. Griffey?
Hi, my name is Janne Griffey, I'm with the Natchez Democrat. As far as I know, Natchez, the city of Natchez Water System hasn't had a boil notice in the last five years. Why are your customers continually getting boiled water notice?
That's a great question. So there's a kind of rule that if the pressure in any system drops below a certain PSI, that you have to, you have to issue a precautionary boil water advisory.
Why is their pressure continually dropping low?
Yeah, so.
I thought in the morning it's not.
So we have what we call remote monitoring on all our systems, which allows us to get a 24/7 kind of notification if anything happens, right? So there's a lot of different reasons why pressure could drop low, whether that's a line break or incident like spike of usage.
But it's on your system, it's not on the city system, it's when it gets to your distribution.
It's the distribution.
What are you doing to fix that?
Yeah, so as I, and I know that it's not what you guys want to hear, I hear you, absolutely. But because we prioritize the treatment of, you know, in the plants in the state that we operate in here, the distribution system fixes come a little bit later.
So you're doing nothing so far in the three years you've been treating it?
We have installed, we have installed a kind of pressure stabilizer right after the line, right after the water comes from Natchez, there's a pressure stabilizer that was installed. And then we do address the breaks as they come up, obviously, and try and be proactive in trying to catch those. That's what that remote monitoring does. So the precautionary boil water advisories, those are, what I can say about those is basically what happens is if it drops below a certain pressure, we have to take samples of the water system to make sure that it's safe and healthy. Every sample that we've taken has, so they are truly precautionary. But it's a law that if a pressure drops below a certain level that we have to issue that.
What is the level?
I believe it's 20 PSI.
Just for my information, you keep saying, talking about your plants, do you have a plant here?
It's the distribution system here.
So all you have is you're tied into Natchez Water, period?
Yeah, the distribution and collection system.
And you don't have, even have a lift station for sewage?
I don't believe so.
So basically, you're getting water from Natchez Water, they're using it and then it goes down the line to the sanitation. You don't have anything here. You got, you got basically what I would call an eye well, we could use an oil field out in the middle of nowhere. I can tell you what the pressures are, how fast the wells running. I know everything about it, what's in the tank and everything. So basically, that is all you have here and you don't have a person.
The remote monitoring and the collection and distribution system, correct? And then we have the operators, yeah.
Mr. President, we could be here all day.
I know, I know.
This is my, on January 26th, Mississippi State Department of Health sent Oakland a letter stating that as a result of excessive total coliform and E. coli?
E. coli.
E. coli?
E. coli, because probably what, I don't have it for you, sorry.
Okay. That means that the water wasn't safe to be drinking, maybe not even taking a shower.
Right.
So they gave y'all, before you bought it, they gave y'all some options. And the first option, I said it before, sell to another public water supplier. Number two, purchase 100% of your water from another public water service. That's what you're doing now. Number three, install treatment on existing well. And number four, install a new well. So what is the plan? Out of them four, what is y'all planning?
So, sir, I believe you might be mentioning a letter from a while ago before we purchased the facility. The, right now, the option that was chosen and then we purchased the system was to purchase 100% of the water from Natchez Water.
That's what I just said.
Exactly, and that is, that is the option that was chosen.
Okay, so you chose the option to purchase your water from the Natchez Water Works. What is the plan? To continue to purchase water from the Natchez Water Works and double charge? Is that the plan?
We see no need for you all.
Understood.
Zero. You don't even have anyone in town if my water runs. My house will be flooded before you get them out of there.
I just want to know.
Understood, yeah. The plan, the plan currently is to continue purchasing water from Natchez Water Works. That is the option that was just, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Y'all can't give me an answer of what you are gonna do.
We don't have no plan.
And I feel sorry for the person that happened right back and is like, I have nothing to give you. How can you have nothing to give me? You're a company. That's unfair.
Understood, and, you know, kind of, kind of like what I was saying before, there is the, the meter replacement plan that they agreement we entered into. And then the, the long-term distribution system fixes is the current, is the current plan.
Okay, so you are going to send a letter to all, everybody here, everybody that's on your system, not just the people that are here.
Yes, sir.
If they had a problem when, 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 when the, uh, pressure went up so high, they, they can make a claim.
Yes.
In the meantime, the Public Service Commission is gonna continue to discuss this and you're gonna have a hearing sometime in November and they're gonna probably cut your rate to a reasonable amount. And you're probably gonna have to, uh, repay some of these people monies that you overcharged them with. Is, is that, is that my understanding of what?
Yes, I believe.
If Carla said and what you're saying.
Yeah, I believe the hearing is November twentieth, uh, at ten AM. And yes, uh, if the commission decides to reject the, uh, the proposal that Great River did, that is subject to refund. So we would obviously follow whatever the commission's decision is.
And what building will y'all be in? What, what building will you be in?
I believe it's the Wolf, Wolf, Wolf Building.
Yes, it, I submitted.
And you, are you gonna send a letter out telling these people that they're welcome to come to this?
Yes, my understanding is any kind of hearing that's set a customer notice is, is going to be set, yes.
Okay, one last question, then we're gonna have to close this hearing.
I'm hearing that Great River in November, you all going to proposition to go up on our bill again.
In, in November of this year?
This year.
That is not my understanding, ma'am.
Okay, and second of all, thanks Ricky Gray. I'm, I applaud you today because he stood up for us today. And I back him up with the question. You come here today to represent Great River, but you don't have a plan? You didn't even have a, a direct plan to either give us until Ricky specify and give you the option because you, you didn't even come forward with a good plan to even explain to us. And then the question they keep asking to you is how, why are we being charged? You keep going back to rate, 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 rate. It's not a good enough answer.
Okay, lady behind her.
Just please.
Okay, hi, my name is Shirley Emmerman, five oh four Brooklyn Drive. Okay, speaking on that water problem, which was like August the twenty-third, I come home, my water was flowing everywhere. My next door neighbor water was flowing everywhere and up the street. Okay, I kept my bill. I talked to Ms. Ann Smith. She's been wonderful, I really am. She, I sent her my bill and she submitted it to, uh, Great River. The response I got was it wasn't enough information. I hadn't even put a pressure on my thing. I mean, the big old water thing that the water come out, it was just flooding all down the street. So my thing was you saying we could put a claim on, but you, I just didn't go out and get a company. There's a man named Mr. Charles Walker that fixed stuff. I have the bill, but she said that wasn't enough. So my thing here, that was a several hundred some dollars. I had to do what I had to do.
Put in a claim.
So, you know, I put in a claim and if it's not enough information, you won't, how do I get my money back?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. We'll, we'll definitely review, uh, review, give us the information. Um, but yeah, generally, a, a bill or invoice will work. Uh, I'd have to see any, yeah, receipt or, or anything like that. I'd have to see the individual, but, but that's, that's the process. It's an invoice, it's a trip and what happened.
But that's not guaranteed and that was something I do not call.
We're, we're, we're gonna guarantee you.
Thank you, Shirley. Ma'am?
Becky Anderson, eleven oh four first street. Okay, one, love this thing of planning. Okay, water lines, they're like broken bones. Keep happening, you keep putting Band-Aids on it, not gonna fix it. Okay, keep having boil water notices, never had that problem with Oakland. And keep having to go out and buy bottled water, which is a great expense, let me tell you, loving it. Hating what it's doing to my hair. And again, another expense, not gonna get reimbursed for it because I know, all right, so don't like that expense. Don't like getting reimbursed for it or not getting reimbursed for it. Don't like my water bill going up because again, I owe too many bills. And I know every one of you has that problem, especially my seasoned, seasoned neighbors. I love y'all. Okay, and quite frankly, if I wanted to get screwed, I'd go to Nellie's.
What we called is out, but I'm here to believe.
Do you have any comment on that?
You know, you know.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna take a couple more questions before we have to go. Yes, sir.
Cleo South, three oh two, Brooklyn. Any possibility of Natchez taking over the distribution of water and eliminate this?
Okay, we, we don't have anything to do with that, but I've asked the man if they were willing to sell and it sounds like, uh, and, and I think after November twentieth, they're gonna be glad to sell because of what's gonna happen with the Public Service Commission. So that's a possibility, probably, we don't have anything to do with. Um, if any of y'all have any questions of this gentleman, maybe, or, or Mr. Carl, there's a conference room in, in, in the back corner to the right, that y'all are welcome to go speak to these people, one-on-one or a couple y'all at a time. You can all go at one time and please keep your voices down because we're gonna continue this. Yes, sir, Mr. Carl?
Yeah, well, thank y'all for coming.
Thanks, Mr. Carl. Thank you.
They need to hear, uh, we need to hear, need to know what we're up against. And, uh, I'll give you my word that I'm gonna do everything possible.
Thank you.
We ran on this race. I just wanna make one observation about this company and pre-dismission. The Southern District has twenty-seven counties, this is one of the counties. From May of last year to January of this year, about twenty systems that the previous commissioner pushed down. They improved that. But I want, I want y'all to understand, I know it doesn't, doesn't bring a whole lot of happiness to you, but we have the same issues everywhere that are at. But in their defense, they have taken some system over that was bad, very bad, especially sewer, especially in the water county. Yeah, and, uh, so one of them, you know, a bad actor. The, you know, you always hear about government being short-staffed. Everybody's trying to work within, they've cut our staff, they've cut the commission staff and the whole. They've cut, uh, M D E Q staff and they've cut the, uh, Department of Health staff. And that's the reason we have some of these systems throughout the state that are in bad shape. You know, it, it's difficult and I understand y'all's pain, I really do about what you're paying. And I would feel the same way.
Okay, I got one more comment from, uh, Mr. Middleton.
I just, I just wanna say that since, uh, Great River purchased Oakland, not, not too, uh, since Great River purchased, uh, Oakland water, these three hundred residents have been invoiced over three quarters of an eight dollar in two years. Whether Great River made a bad purchase here or made a bad purchase somewhere else, it's not these residents' responsibility to finance their mistakes. And these residents need to be taken care of.
Thank all of y'all for coming and I'm sorry what you're going through, but I think, it sounds like to me that, that there's, there's an end to this, you know, so, so just, just hang in there. If you have any comments you wanna make to these gentlemen, back corner of, of, of the building, and, and thank you all for coming. Yes, sir.
Great River, before, before you leave out for the people in here that don't have your contact information, could you say where we can put it? Cause I don't have it, I don't.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's the cards and that kind of, oh, there's the report. So yes, we will give you that, sir. Um, I'll get it right here. Uh, and then what I also wanted to, to mention really quickly was in the letter that you sent out about the claim reimbursement, we'll include all that as well so that everyone has it, uh, even the folks that are not here. Um, but, uh, let me, do you have the, one of the cards so I can give the information? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so the email is support@greatriveruoc.com. And then the phone number is one eight five five eight zero one eight four four zero.
What is your name?
Thank you, sir.
What is your name?
Erin Sykes.
Well, thank, thank you so much. Uh, you've taken this very well. I would hate to miss your shoes, to be honest with you. Uh, but, uh, these people need some answers and I think they've got some today.
I gotta get out of this guy's voice.
If any of y'all need anything, or is it fine? You read the meter of the month. Ms. McNamie?
Ms. of the state, Ms. Marjorie McNamie at twenty-two S Woodlawn.
Okay.
She had a tree fall from her house two years ago and we need to decrease the value of her house. It's gonna decrease the taxes by five hundred eighty dollars.
Petition for adoption and assessment, tax assessor. The property was overvalued for the fiscal year ending twenty-four taxes?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the pleasure for the email? Moved by Mrs. Huckin, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Martin Swate, Adams County, nine one one.
Okay.
Calls for the month of October the first through the twenty-first. Next police department is at seven hundred and forty-two calls. Adams County Sheriff's Office at two hundred and fifty-seven calls. And next fire department is at nineteen.
Okay, is that all you got? Appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna go back to Ms. Hollyo. Ms. Hollyo?
Yep, yep, that's me.
You must have been back there.
I was there.
Yeah, trapped.
So I'm here on a different note for, um, the animals of Natchez Adams County. Um, so I've been here before to, in a preparation request, I did that a while back. But each year, the last, uh, seven years, I come, uh, with the idea for animals car tag grant that we applied for. Um, I'm with, uh, Spainer Natchez and I'm the president, we're a small group here in Natchez. We help people long for short, we just help people get their pets fixed. Y'all have been supportive of what we do and you've signed this grant. We, we fill this out, um, and y'all sign it on our behalf. And the way this works is y'all receive the funds. We've been approved every year, we've gotten great ten thousand dollars, uh, for this grant. Um, and y'all receive the funds and then our group turns in the paperwork and we submit, submit it to y'all and then y'all reimburse us for the debt bills that we pay. Um, so far, we, the, our group, Spainer Natchez, which we were part of the city's Spainer for, um, ten years before we formed ourselves, uh, four years ago, uh, we've done over four thousand five hundred surgeries fixing animals in our community. So for the animal lover, if you realize each one of those having at least one litter, so forth, so forth, it, it would be huge. So we know that our work is important and that we are making a difference here and so I just have the.
Sure, bring, bring that paperwork up and, uh, I need a motion to, uh, sign this, uh, letter. Moved by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? Any discussion? How do you vote? Any negative? Motion, period. Okay, if you would, uh, could you go make a copy of this, uh, Corvett will help you. So she can put it in, put it in a minute. Do you have anything else for her? Okay, you have to pull it back, please pull it back. Thank you. All right, did Natasha James show up? She's never out there. Okay, we're gonna go back to departmental reports.
Morning, boy.
Morning.
Uh, Sam, I'm a, a public service officer. Uh, don't have anything, uh, news report. Uh, the, I have anything to mention, just let me know, uh, continue to help the veterans out in the community and, uh, try to, uh, get some support for the, for the pressure.
Okay, are you, uh, are you getting close to being certified or are you certified?
Uh, through the state, I am.
Okay, not nationally?
Not nationally. Uh, I can't get that until, uh, next year.
Okay, I, I just curious. I, I went to the VFW, uh, for the hot air balloon race, uh, they had a, a fish fry and what have you. There was, there were about a hundred people there. It was really neat to see those little guys and, 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 you know, talk to them. But, uh, all right, appreciate it. All right. All right, departmental reports. Anybody?
Good morning.
Morning.
Sherri Cunne, with the Adams County. I do have the two quotes, they were the quotes before us. I got one from Superior Pools and Dorian Pools in Alexandria. Blankenspan, however, does not have the criteria to actually do what we need to be done, drain and clean up the pool. He also did tell me that he's been working with the pools since it's been open. And if we do drain it, there may be lots of crabs in the pools on there, he's not sure. We definitely, you're, so I got quotes on draining and cleaning the pool from both Superior and Dorian instead of let's just drain it. I got it from him.
And then they're gonna clean it as well?
Yes.
And then, uh, I guess watch it being refilled and make sure things okay? And, and, and I think the sentence, the invoices, did everybody see those? I think Superior was, what, twenty, how much?
Well, actually, he had taken some of it, so it's just a little four hundred for Superior.
Okay, and the other one was?
Thirty-five.
Okay, uh, so obviously Superior is the best quote, uh, would y'all, I need a motion to. So move by Ms. Huckin, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we're gonna take Superior Pool.
Oh, one more thing, uh, so once I do these, do I have, I need to go to the city to get a pool before I can move anything, right? Before we can start anything?
Yes, and can you give us a copy of those? Can you get Corvett to make a copy so, uh, she can put it in a minute?
I mean, if your budget's been approved by the city, then they've already approved it. Is this within our, you know, acceptable guidelines? And no, the only reason you're approving this is because it's, it's a purchase.
Mr. President?
Labor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Scott, I think it's some clarification need to be made on this situation because, uh, from what I'm reading, you got people over there saying that she need to come over here and do this, she need to come over there and do this. And, uh, we don't really have an agreement in place. The last time we, they came before us, they said they couldn't get no commissioners, right? So they wanted us to do whatever we had to do because they couldn't appoint no commissioners. So I don't know how we gonna straighten this out, uh, because as far as I know, she is the director and I, I didn't, I didn't think we had nothing passed where the recreation director was in charge of anything, right?
No.
So I would just need to be kind of clarified with the city of Natchez so we can all be on the same page.
We're supposed to get our annual budget approved for the pool and then that way she didn't have to come back asking for every little thing. So if you've got an annual budget, which I don't think we changed our annual budget at all for recreation. So then you present them whatever that budget is, get their approval and then you shouldn't have to go back as long as she stays within her line.
Well, to keep everything in a, a, a good order, we need to get with the city to make sure because it's, people talking to people any kind of way, man. And everybody just ain't gonna keep taking that. People talking to people any kind of way, man, and everybody just ain't gonna keep taking that. Only thing I'm saying, everybody grown, and these talking people like they grown, and ain't nobody got no kids out here that working for them, because from full of what I read, it need to be some communication.
All that doesn't concern you.
President, I have a question. So Scott, for clarification, you're saying that she has this budget, okay, and she is the director? So, the things that, uh, she's bringing up today to get approved through us, it's already in her budget, the funding is in her budget. She does not have to come to us or the city for this approval?
The reason she came to us is for the two bid situation, because it wasn't necessarily a purchase. She needs to have a budget that's approved by the city, that should be what you should go for, and say, here's your budget. And the rest should be a quorum that's coming up the city, this, that, and the others happening. But we can, I, like I said, I think they have a meeting tomorrow.
Right.
You know, is it a morning meeting, or?
Second meeting.
What's that? A night meeting?
Second meeting.
Okay. I can go there tomorrow night and get on the same page with them with, with the budget.
Yeah, 'cause see, I'm, I'm hearing the same thing. She has to come to us to get approved, but then go to the city to get it approved, and...
We've already approved the budget.
Right, so the budget has to be approved, uncovered by every purchase that she does. They want her to come to us for approval, then come to be on approval.
As county centralized purchasing goes through centralized.
That's purchasing, right, do, uh...
This is a service, it's a little bit different.
Right.
All right, we're good. And could you make copies of those for her, those just for, for instance? Yes, ma'am.
Morning, any price purchase clerk for Adams County Supervisor. I, I just wanted to make sure Adams School was going as well, so some purchase clerk. And if we had to get opinions from both sides, I needed to know before I proceed, so...
We'll get on the same page.
Okay. Um, first of all, I'd like to spread the procurement and travel card across the minutes for pool for September.
Need a move, moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, I'm, second of all, um, we got bids for the painting of the courthouse, and the, um, person that wanted, you know, the contract ends October thirty-first, so he called me and asked if we was, with the update on that.
Well, we, um...
The bid, we need to talk to that person.
I got to look at the courthouse, I think it needs pressure washing, period. Uh, the, the amount of money it costs to paint it, I don't, I don't really think it needs painted. I don't know what the supervisor's thinking. Uh... What are, what are y'all's thoughts about that, um, yes?
I looked at it two, three months ago when this first came up. I don't think it needs to be painted, I think there's some spots, uh, I think it could be washed down. I think some of the windows need to be re-glazed, but I don't think the entire courthouse needs to be painted. That's my opinion.
I think that it went into my attention, so, uh, I feel the same way. I feel like if it's pressure washed, then it, it'll work, and some spots need to be painted.
I, I believe what we're gonna do then is probably just get a, uh, estimate to pressure wash, and glaze the windows, and touch up some paint, instead of painting the whole building, so you can let, we're gonna let that go. Uh, we're not, we're not gonna fulfill the contract.
Let that go, okay. All right, um... Um, I would like to spread across the minutes, the, um, software update for the sheriff's department. The M and M Microsystems, eighty-eight thousand dollars, and they had a sole source, or you did approve for that?
Need a motion for the update on the equipment in the sheriff's office.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, the last thing I have is we were revisiting the debris monitoring from last, uh, board meeting, due to the fact of the, um, I think a couple things we mentioned about the pricing of it, and someone mentioned about the last time we used the...
The, the load bid. We had not had a good experience with that load bid, correct, Rob?
But the bottom line is, uh, we don't have to use them anyway, is that correct? So, do we need to, um, have a great debris removal?
Well, the advantage of it, the advantage of it is, if you do, and you go ahead and use them and mobilize them, then you get reimbursed for being the best.
Okay.
What were those two problems?
This is the debris monitor.
But you don't have to find, just because one of them is the overall lowest average, that that's the lowest and best bid. You could say that the other one's the lowest and best because the majority of the workers are cheaper, so you expect it'll be cheaper.
But it costs us nothing to, to approve a bid on it in this case, okay?
So, debris tech was two hundred and fourteen dollars, and tech tech was two hundred and nineteen dollars. That was the total amount.
And that was the one where debris tech, their higher people were more, but their, their labor rates were lower, and I felt that they would be lower long-term, really.
So the two hundred and nineteen dollar, I found out what tech, what, what was it?
Two hundred and fourteen or something like that.
Debris tech, two hundred and fourteen, tech tech, two hundred and nineteen.
All right, need a motion for whichever one? Tech tech?
Tech tech.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Ms. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
He's got hope, he can ask for a discussion.
Right.
Brad.
I didn't see you there.
Oh, I never had a hat on, that's why you said you didn't look at it. Uh, for the boardmaker vote, I wanna keep in mind that, uh, debris monitoring is different from debris removal. Back in the days, company could get both contracts, and I didn't stop that for the same reason, price gouging, the things that exist. Uh, I have worked with debris, uh, debris tech, uh, with the monitoring department, uh, this new company. I have no idea how they do debris monitoring, all that, uh, that's the recommendation that I gave her. The, the debris removal, uh, is different. They can't, uh, they're not allowed to, uh, put a bid in for the debris removal. That's the most important part of debris removal. The monitoring just makes sure the removal company is doing a great job, make sure we get reimbursed for everything that they don't do. So it's, it's a two-fold step on that. We don't have to pay them no money on that. This is just getting them in hand and making sure they can work with other companies. So if you look at, a lot of these companies work well with other people that put bids in. Uh, if you get companies that never work together, a lot of times that hinders, uh, 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 county's ability, uh, to try to get the debris removal done on that.
Uh, uh, Ms., Mr. President, uh, what Brad, like I said, I don't know, when we looked at that, uh, I talked to Robert. Regardless of what, I mean, we had a bad experience with them at first, you know, so we did...
That was a monitoring company, a little bit, uh, cleaners in the hangars.
Yeah, so we had, uh...
Was green, and we didn't get reimbursed for it.
They didn't do good.
They, they did not do a good job monitoring, and, you know, um, sometimes, we, I guess we don't wanna be caught with the same thing. We didn't have a good experience, and we never know. Hopefully, we don't have to have it, but, uh, trying somebody new, I don't wanna go back with the same people that, that, that did us a bad job last time. You know, it took us, what, two years to get our money back?
I, I'm, only reason for that is, you gotta, you gotta understand, when you're talking about debris monitor, you gotta have people in place to know what they're supposed to do, what you're looking for. I think the problem came when I think they wanted me and Robbie to try to watch those people. And I, and I told them, that ain't our job, but you still gotta be on them, because like I said, that's up to the companies doing the debris removal, to make sure all that paperwork is lined up. Because if you get, if they hauling stuff that's not in that contract, we're not on that truck, when you go to that site, you gonna get caught. And what gonna happen is, the, the county's gonna take that. So it's a two-fold story. You know, I'm just advising the board that these ones that I've worked with in the past, if, if we do get another, uh, person to do the debris removal, those, those individuals got to work talent. And if they don't work talent, the county still gonna be liable for our stuff. But that's just my recommendation, y'all make a comment, I'm just letting you know, I, I never experienced other companies. You know, a lot, a lot of times, you know, companies, you know, they, they may do, they might have side cases, but it depends on, if you get another company, on the debris rule, may hold them accountable. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I need a little clarification on this now. Debris monitoring and the debris removal, so if we hire somebody for monitoring, why would they want y'all to do it?
No, you, you still have to, the county's clear about it, you still got to, aren't they, you check the monitor, make sure they're doing it, because you got to ask about it. That's what I'm saying. Back when we did this with the ice storm, I think Scott was here, and I raised my opinion on that. We could pull the minutes, I did. I raised my opinion about them doing that, making sure that people understand what they're doing, especially you talk about cutting trees, and you building, uh, those debris piles on that.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm, so if we hire somebody to monitor the company that's cutting, uh, hauling debris or cutting or whatever the case may be, we paying them to monitor it?
No, no, monitoring is all it on is...
It's free.
What?
The monitoring part.
It, it's free to us, unless we need them.
My question is this, we paying somebody to monitor, right?
For debris removal, you gotta have monitoring.
Okay, then you got somebody removing it, right?
Right.
I thought I heard you say they wanted you and Robbie.
No, you, what I'm saying is, somebody from the county gotta make sure they're doing their right job. You gotta have somebody like...
Somebody from the county got to make sure that the monitor...
Right, that they're sure, like, that they're still doing it, either me or the road department.
Well, that, that comes automatic, though.
What?
Then we should have somebody from the county running through and making sure that everything is...
But the problem came was, was Robbie wasn't doing it, was out with you, I was with you. That's what the problem is, with them, somebody had to do it, so that's, that's where we, the, the conflict came was, I gonna be responsible, or the road department gonna be responsible. And it never, that never, that conflict never got resolved, no.
All right, well, that's all right, but we got a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried.
Who do you want to, if we have an emergency, who's supposed to monitor the monitoring? You want Robbie, or you want it, Brad?
I think Robbie's gonna be on the road, and his guys will be on the road the whole time.
Any motion?
We tell them we motion, uh...
We just carried the...
The retake, though.
Tech, tech.
Tech, tech, tech. I make a motion that Robbie will monitor.
Okay, listen, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Yes, ma'am?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next.
We were just here.
Yeah, I'm much part.
Oh, okay.
I went for hints. Good morning, board, uh, just give you, uh, update, the Adams County Reception Center, we're at about six o'clock, six o'clock asleep. Uh, we waiting on the doors to come in, uh, before they start putting the electric lights and everything inside of it. We don't wanna put all that in, and somebody come steal all that out of there. So we just waiting on the doors to make sure all that first, on that, but they own project. Hopefully, they can be done probably by December, depending on the weather, uh, with that project. Uh, second thing I got, I know every year we do the supervisor, the Adams County Christmas luncheon. Uh, I wanna ask the board, can we make that a Christmas dinner to push it back, uh, that, that December thirteenth around seven o'clock? Because last year, a lot of people had problems trying to get off and get attended luncheon, because they still had hours going to wreck the business out. So I wanna ask the board, can we make that a dinner where we can get a hundred percent participation, and the road department don't win all the, uh, the door prizes?
Six o'clock sounds better, you know, most people can't drive after dark, you know, if you, they getting older, they can't see. I'm not talking about me. But, anyway.
That's what y'all, right, you just need to be out for work hours, so you're not participating.
Yeah, I think the legal work goes about five thirty-six. Okay, uh, fine, you need a motion for that, or you...
That's just six o'clock.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All, all in favor? Oh, Robbie doesn't like it, 'cause he's not...
I got a discussion.
Okay.
So you having it, December thirteenth, at what time?
Yeah, y'all, y'all working.
Uh, at what time?
At six.
Y'all having all the cooking, all the supply?
Yeah, we got all that.
Y'all got everything?
We got everything.
Okay.
All right.
Robbie's happy.
I'm just checking, that's for me.
All in favor?
We got...
All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Uh, next, I wanna lead request a budget transfer, uh, from the nine one one. Our nine one one vehicle needs repairs, transmission, I need some work to be done on it. I did send my budget request to Stephanie, she has it already, over nine hours.
Okay, you gonna tell them where you gonna move, what, the two from, or do you need that? Please.
It's gonna come from the O nine seven, uh, line five thirty-three. We're gonna move, uh, four thousand dollars up to the repair maintenance bit, which is five forty-two. Which told us the, we got thousands in there, but it won't cover the, um, repairs on it, so we need additional four thousand from that line out.
All right, need a motion?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Miss, uh, Stephanie, okay. She shaking her head.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Hey, next, uh, lead request to attend the, uh, E nine one coordinator conference, uh, October twenty-eighth through thirty-first. Uh, the nine one association is paying for my trip. That's a good one.
Uh, moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Uh, also, our meeting of conferences issued in November, the nineteenth to the twenty-first. You good?
It's been a...
Okay.
Everything we take care of. November, the nineteenth, July, uh...
Good luck with your attention. Uh, last thing I got, um, lead travel, uh, for Bury Cooks, Billy Haley, Connie Mason, they go attending, uh, G two eighty, local volunteers, donation manager, class, and book and cabinet, uh, October forty-second, forty-third, they gonna be driving down to come back.
Okay.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brad. Next.
Morning.
Morning, Darrell.
All I have is a really request for a burner van from the beginning of November the twenty-first.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
We'll do the next again.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Forrest, Mr. Baker, and everyone else at the County National Department. So we, last week, had three hundred and fifty-five acres burned out, fifty rows. So, we did a good job, you know, 'cause it jumped the burning line, but we got it controlled the next day, so that's one reason why I got the request into burning, because there's no rain in the forecast, and we can't have so many...
Yeah, I think this might be the first month in a long, long time, we haven't had, uh, one drop of rain in twenty-one days, uh, in a month.
I'll have to kinda get a copy of that, so I can send it.
Outside it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, that, that paperwork you got last week?
Yeah, you, you've got a letter here, uh, now it's your retirement. Okay, we, we need to spread this across the minutes, uh, do I need to read your letter to you? Okay, but it's your letter of resignation, 'cause you're retiring, right? Okay, moved by Ms. Hutchins.
That's it.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Uh, any discussion?
We, special wedday.
Effective December the first. Uh, I, and my only discussion is, thank you for your service for all these years with the county. Uh, uh, we certainly appreciate it, uh, and I know you'll be missed, 'cause you got a golden personality. You, you're laid back, man, and you, you never cause any trouble. When you got a problem, I mean, you let people know.
He took out your mom.
I appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your service, but I just wanna know, I think you hold two positions, right? You are the fire coordinator, but you also is the county investigator, somebody too?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct? I just wanna make sure, because we get ready to, 'cause we definitely got to have a fire investigator, and even if there's, so there's one position that can't... No, I'm just saying, that, that's a, a, I was just getting a full description of... No, I'm just saying, that's a, a, uh, I was just getting a full description of what you do, so when we look for somebody, I know we was, uh, you know, talking about cut, but just thinking about, uh, some people that we move out that we was not, might not hire back, but that's a position that we have to hire for. So, you know, but I do appreciate your service and I appreciate, uh, like, uh, Echo and Supervisor Wilson said, that you have been great to work for. And I just wanna let you know, me and you working on a few projects, and I'm gonna work you till November third, so I let you know, I'm not gonna let up when we need to get this fire.
December first.
December.
Um, I said November third, I'm gonna give him December.
So November third is gonna be your last day?
Oh, on that.
December first gonna be his last day, I'm gonna give him the last day off, I'm gonna.
And he gonna work it until then.
That's what I said.
My only thought on what you just said about the fire investigators, the city has one, I think we could actually use theirs, because there's not that many fires.
Yeah.
But that's part of the discussion, but anyway, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Darrell. Yes, sir.
That time is right around the corner, I think we need to go advertise for that position. Uh, and if we find somewhere, body, we, we can. Hopefully, uh, Garrett can help him out before he leave. I don't know about no city investigating nothing in the county, I don't know about all that.
Well, anyway, this is a idea with me to, to save money for the county, if we, if, you saw the fire report. Nineteen fires in the whole city, that county, everything, in, in the whole month, and then most of the probably trash fires and automobiles burning. So there's not a whole lot of investigating. How many fires you typically investigate in a month?
A month? Uh, probably every other month, something like that.
Okay, so one or two every other month, you see, that's why, where I'm going with that. Okay, well, I, I appreciate, do you have anything else for us?
Um, let me say this.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna thank you for all the service that you have, you know, putting in to this, with this county. I've been knowing you ever since you came here, as, as long as I've been here, so I'd like to thank you, like to say, Supervisor Wilson, say you're a quiet person, and we pretty much have to make you talk. And thank you for taking care of volunteer fires, uh, the volunteer firefighters, because you did a great job in doing that. And also, uh, I'm gonna miss you, because I'm not gonna be to discuss all Quentin Jackson State game with you. But I will give you a call to, uh, find out where your tail gave, so we can still get together on that. Uh, but, uh, your retirement, I want you to go and do what's best for you and enjoy it, and I'll see you then.
I guess I gotta say something too, everybody else saying something, I just want to congratulate you, man, you know how I feel, uh, uh, at the end of the day, you was a champion in nineteen eighty-four, and you a champion again, thank you.
Yes. So, Mr. Smith, I already said, if I got one more job I need you to do, or put you to work, can you, cause we gonna try to decide on this position. Can you kinda give us a a good description? Job description, what you actually do on daily basis, so we can make sure, you know, we make that great decision. You know, uh, on getting somebody, uh, there, and if you kinda know somebody that, uh, that I guess like we do all other people, not saying that we have gone high in about, but if somebody's a recommendation that you might think about, uh, I would, myself personally would appreciate that also.
And you just write the name, man.
Yeah, and but, but I do thank you for your service, uh, Mr. Smith.
How many years?
Eleven with the county, twenty-one with the city.
Could you get with the, uh, county administrator with that, uh, for that, uh, descrip- job description, where we can get it wrote down, where we can send it out?
All right, Darrell, thank you very much, man.
Darrell, I just wanna echo what I said, thank you for being a dedicated, loyal employee for Adams County. Appreciate it.
All right, but I hope, I hope those knees get better when you stay off. It pains me to see you off, man.
I think the Saints are having trial, she not gonna put pads back on.
All right, thank you, man.
All right.
Next.
Hey, Darrell, before you go, man, I want you to hear this, uh, I attended something that Jackson State had Friday. It's some people was inducted to the Jackson State Hall of Fame, and I was invited up there. Uh, Coach Sharrock, he coached at Northern United for a couple of years, and Jerry Kennedy was inducted to the Jackson State Hall of Fame, that was awesome, man.
Yeah, Tim Warren, he was on Team League.
Yeah, I got that book in the car.
Yep, so, yeah, he was Team League, I think Kevin Nance earlier this year was inducted to the college football. Been around some good guy that too playing ball. All right, thank you. Morning, boy.
Hey, Robbie.
Have a couple of things, uh, Kevin, you should have, uh, President Wilson's, uh, request, past that people are, uh, legal dump sites from DQ, one thousand, one hundred ninety dollar, fifty-eight cents.
I think I got the two of them.
Yes, sir, the other one's a waste, uh, for about four hundred and seven dollars.
Okay. You wanna do them together?
You can.
No, you can't? Okay, so do it at the same time? Okay. Payment request on one of them is one thousand, one hundred ninety, fifty-eight.
I'll make the.
And the second one is for one thousand, four hundred and seven.
We gonna do, you need the most.
Both, both, okay.
So I, I, I'll make the, uh, motion to approve both payment requests, uh, from DQ.
Okay, need a second? Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Only other thing I have, uh, last meeting, I, uh, didn't be off, uh, October ninth to October eleventh. Uh, I did not take off, I sent email, next day, trip got canceled, so I sent email out, and I just want to bring it back before the board, uh, I was not about.
Okay. We need to do anything with that, Scott? All right.
That's all I have.
A light day for you.
Yes. Well, I got a few things, but it's probably MS.
Oh, okay.
I would leave it for you, yeah, it's.
All right.
Just, uh, I know we was real busy last week, we getting the roads open and dealing with Morgantown, but I just, I have two people that we need to go see, and we don't have to. You know, one of them with the, I can't get the score of their request, was Ben in previous meeting, Charlie Ellis, you remember that, we gotta go look at that. I have another one on Morgantown we need to look at, and I have another one on Armory Road, so it just, I just need some time, sometime in the first of this week, and we gonna look at. And I, I can't give you a time now, cause I need to contact people and see when they available, but just be looking for me, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, boys. Uh, the script is, uh, first is the striping on the project, SAP oh one ten, hold up, Kingston Road, Lowell Wiggier Road, and Armory Road. Uh, certification that was provided to State A was accepted by State A. Uh, therefore they gave us authorization to move full, final closeout of that project. Uh, we submitted all final closeout documents to State A last week, and so they are, uh, providing us with a, uh, a board acceptance letter and board order that needs to be signed by the board president, and submitted back to State A as part of the final, uh, closeout of that project. So I'm requesting board authorization, and I want the board president to sign the acceptance letters, uh, that was provided by State A for that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to allow the president to sign the necessary documents that he needs to sign.
I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? I got one. Which roads are we talking about?
Uh, Lowell Wiggier Road, Armory Road, and Kingston Road.
Okay.
Both the striping project that we just did.
Oh, where, where is the Kingston stripe gonna start and, and end at?
It's, it's already.
Oh, it's already, so this is the final part of?
This is the final closeout for.
Okay. I have a reason for asking that question. Okay, all in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Uh, secondly, fourth Morgantown Road started on last Tuesday, they're performing, uh, form clearing road along the project. Uh, hopefully it be done in a few weeks, we'll carry and then move forward to the next stage of that project. Uh, last item I have is the, uh, M C W I project that we had, that the county had for Deerfield Road, uh, we decided that the project was no longer needed. But I did receive a call from one who represents, uh, DQ that relates to the M C W I program. They stated that even though the county, uh, denied to Deerfield Road, that they still found the project within that same budget frame and still have that, that money allocated to that project. Um, only thing they need to have in place in order to secure that project was a MOU between the county and the board administrator, seeing that they're gonna allocate that same amount of money to a different project. That will allow the county to find the project within that same budget and have it go until December thirty first. That's why we are extending heads to August thirty first deadline to December thirty first. And county can't find one, the county just can't find one, and then you just go away, but they still wanna have that option in place to have that fund allocated to that project until December thirty first.
How much is?
It's about forty, 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 forty one thousand. So the county's on, on, we put about twenty, twenty thousand.
Is that on State A roads?
No, that's, uh, that water project.
Oh, okay.
President.
Yes, ma'am.
That was one of my projects, and that was the funds that I.
Okay. Deerfield.
That Deerfield. But I would like to continue to, um, make that MOU to keep that, uh, funding in place up until December thirty first, just in case we find a project. And I've had been approached before about another project that may cost that amount. So I would like to make a motion that we submit a MOU just to keep that funding in place to December thirty first, just in case, um, someone else or that project that I was looking at may materialize on that.
Moving by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? I have it, motion carries.
I thought you should have, you signed it.
I signed it, yes, sir.
And then the, uh, county district signed it, just here to be known.
Okay, we'll get it, we'll get it to you. Um, the, the reason I ask you about which roads and State A and what have you is, I was in a meeting, um, Thursday with First Roger Wicker, and then I went to a meeting with Delver Hoesman. And, uh, he, he, he looked at me when we got through, he said, I, I want you to call me in a few minutes, I got something. Oh, and, uh, my curiosity got the best of me after about, it took two hours. So I called him, and he, uh, he said, I got some money I wanna give, give you for Adams County, I need a project. Now, I'm like, how much, or, you know, and he, he was kinda vague about it, could be three hundred to five hundred thousand, might come with a little bit of a match. But I said, what about give Kingston Road, and he wanted to know how long it was, um, widen and pave? And, um, he said, well, that's a little long, but we can get part of it. And, uh, the only thing it requires is some match, because he said he gave the, the mayor five hundred thousand dollars to light the bridge, and the money's still sitting there, cause it hasn't been done. But at any rate, he said, just get an estimate. We don't have to have engineer do it yet, but, and, and get ideal, what, maybe we can go to Ogden Road or something, just, that is probably the worst part, where most people end up getting killed in those curves and stuff. So anyway, I'm gonna, I don't even know what I, what I need to do, Scott, I haven't talked to you about that, cause it just happened on Thursday or Friday. But anyway, I, 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 if, he's gonna give Adams County some money, and we can do that, I think, I would, I would like to do that, but I just wanted to let, let y'all know what I was thinking about doing, and buy for you some, some of the CARES Act money to do the match, uh, cause we, where my district hasn't used any yet at all, but at any rate. Uh, I just want to let you know that, that's why I asked that question about Kingston Road. So we might have a project.
See if we can generate estimates for it.
I think, uh, Robbie's just gonna ride it with, with, with one, uh, a contractor, maybe?
Yeah, sixty-one dollars.
Get an idea how far we gonna go?
Yeah.
Uh, and then we're, then we're gonna probably have to take it from there. And get his, say, if he says yes, and I, I don't know where the funds are, are actually coming from yet, maybe I'll, had that happened before? No? It just, it was a strange conversation, but, uh, Lieutenant Governor wants to give us some money, fix the road, we'll, we'll fix the road.
President Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
You sure you don't want to put that money on Liberty Road?
I, I asked him about that, and he said, I like Kingston Road. I, I thought that was, cause I mentioned both of them, actually, cause I thought we, you know, how much money we're talking about, but we can get, King, believe me, Liberty Road was in the conversation, but he, but, okay. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Cause this, uh, was, um, so I, I wanna, um, kinda throw something out there to the board, um, concerning Morgantown Road. Um, so you know, we are in phase two, and we're gonna have to do phase one of Morgantown. And so, looking at everything, and I know the dilemma that we almost have with Morgantown with, so, uh, utilities. All of us, bring us up to speed that we had previous plans with no utilities done. And so, you know, the engineer, uh, and I had, um, brief conversation with, um, our road manager, just kinda idea of where we going, after talking to the, uh, engineer, so the engineer's gonna need some kind of direction, consensus of the board, a way to go, uh, our main drainage areas that we have, uh, we are definitely addressing them. So, you know, on the, cause if we have to end up moving water and everything on the front of Morgantown, so we definitely talking about having the five hundred thousand in another, at least year, two years of prolonging on that road, so I'm just wanna, wanna give a option, not saying that this is what we wanna do, but giving the option to, uh, see how the board feels, cause I don't wanna start the project with letting him, uh, well, it's gonna, I'm gonna throw it for the city first, just throwing it to y'all, man, we got to have a joint meeting, letting them get a price on replacing the existing drainage, so we'll be in there. But that part of Morgantown does, uh, drain pretty good, trying, doing existing drainage, uh, milling and, uh, paving the road, cause without keeping it for another five-year project, so it's just a, just something I'm going out there to the board, nothing I did anything, nothing I said anything, so I wanna see how the board feel about that, to keep the project moving, and then, you know, from some point from there, we'll have to get with the city and go ahead and get him some directions on where to go, I don't wanna wait till, uh, come March, and we have no direction on which way we gonna go with the plan, and the weather be good and they finishing up, and we don't know which way to go with phase one, so.
Any updates on Burke or York Road?
So, Burke, I'm only waiting on authorization from State A to advertise the project. So they're okay with the right away certification information that we submit. Now they just need M dot concur and release the phone network in their, in their household, to release the phones to move that project through with construction. So I'm just waiting on his authorization to advertise that project. York Road, I'm not sure that project has been activated or, I haven't had anything, we had conversations a while back about, uh, recertifying, uh, one of the funding sources on the, on the ERPR, I've heard different M dot six, we submitted that, whether to.
Can we follow up? Thank you.
The right away should be good to go, they were waiting on the increase of the special utility permit from this December until next December, which I already told them over and over again, the only reason we have to extend it is cause y'all let us put it out for bid, cause the project won't take long. Nonetheless, got that extended, and so she expects it to get approved at a right away.
So once she, once they get approved, that makes it, uh, State A is good, we should get authorization soon, M dot six.
If you're just shoot an email out to freshen it up, we need to get rolling on that.
Okay, and y'all had a favorable meeting with the intergy? Later the week? Uh, concerning Morgantown Road and telephone poles and what have you, everybody's in home, we're good?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's great. Well, that's that's great. Alright, anything else?
Well, the project was too amazing to me to be, I can go and I can do it.
I'm I'm not, I'm I'm I just throw this out for the board. We doing a project going through the city, but before you can do anything, we need to see the uh, where the city is. And we'll have a meeting on there, so I just wanted to let my board know what we in, what we was up against. So until we have a joint meeting and see the consensus of where everybody going, then that's where it's at. I just throw my idea out there, so when we do call a joint meeting, uh, you know, sometime before the year is out. Then everybody can express their concern. I just laid it on the table over here for my board. And uh, so that was it right now, so I don't think no actions need to be taken, cause we not even made a vote, I just laid it out there for them. Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Good luck, I appreciate you all, sir.
Yes sir, thank you. There's a couple of troublemakers.
Wait, I mean that.
He gonna let me at the first point and then pass for the application. I just have one request that if it's approved that uh, supervisor Gray get a weapon, we get one request if we can get his old vehicle. Cause we already just need four vehicles.
It might be a cage match for that.
Yeah, and I I don't know if we got that in our budget anyway.
Yeah, we just put it out there, so we still need to be able to take somebody who wanna donate this one. We need the I D for vehicle, we want the first one on there.
Might we get, I would get a lottery story. Bye.
Good morning, morning. Have a couple of things. Uh, first thing is ask to make a budget amendment from zero three zero 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 two three eight. Which is that federal forfeiture fund and with fifty thousand dollars into zero three zero two two one six one three. Which is law enforcement supplies, so that we can purchase fifteen heavy vests for the S R T team. Uh, that's what we own state contract.
Okay, you heard the request?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gray?
Say.
Okay, bye now, sir. Any discussion? She said no. All in favor? Any needs? Most curious.
Uh, the only other thing that I have is uh, hiring up some employees, three foot jail on one for the road. Have any of those sheets?
Is yours that Jacavia Barnes?
Uh, let's see, Erica Dawes. Jacavia, or Javius Matthews.
I've got Erica, Erica Dawes.
Or on Blue, or on Bluey, I'm sorry. Those are the three foot jail.
Okay, and Kaj- Javius Matthews?
J A K A Y L A Barnes.
Oh, DeKayla Barnes, okay. I've got them all. Alright, uh, we're gonna do them all together. Uh, DeKayla Barnes, um, new hire. Detention officer, twenty seven thousand five hundred eighteen forty a year. Javius Matthews, new hire, um, sixteen eighty one hour, thirty four thousand nine sixty four eighty. Or on Bluey, new hire, thirteen twenty three an hour, twenty seven thousand five eighteen forty. And Erica Dawes, uh, new hire, thirteen twenty three an hour, twenty seven thousand five eighteen forty. Uh, need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Uh, these are replacement houses.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor? Any needs? Most curious.
So before we have any questions for me, we'll turn it over to Sheriff, last chance.
Wait a minute, we getting voted y'all? Oh, no, no sir, you go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be real quick on the needs assessment. I'll give you an update. Um, had the needs assessment meeting about three weeks ago, very successful. And um, I talked to their company, um, Catherine Ryan with detention operation. She gave me a schedule of our next steps as they're working on the, putting on the information together. We're gonna have a meeting sometime end of November, December with this board in the C J C C committee. And then sometime in January, February, we will have a public meeting. So I just kind of wanted to touch base with that. Also, gotta, and I think you've already done this, Stephanie, but we haven't paid our bill to them, two invoices that were sent as of Thursday last week. Any questions?
Thank you. Good save it.
Excuse me, I have one more thing before I leave. Um, the sheriff department, the police department, and the fire department. We all are integrating into his software with the CAD system with M and M, Microsoft. Uh, we're split, we're all splitting costs. He's sole source of the server, am I right?
Server, which.
Control of the server, yeah, but we all splitting it up.
But you don't have your own.
We don't have our own server. We have our own server.
Don't own nine one, we don't own nine one one.
Basically what it is, it's a new CAD system that we all are integrating into. Well, we can see what everybody's putting in there, but we gonna have to keep all the paperwork out of our. So we all gonna be on the same CAD system, but we splitting costs. Our cost for our department is thirty five thousand. It is in my budget, but he said I have to get it through through board to do a, to get a deal for it.
Is that on top of what?
They have, they, everybody's giving their own, because if something happens to, isn't, it's not they giving their own, but the North Coast, the interface. Dispatch need their section, P has theirs, fire has theirs. It won't cost as much as like ours, because we provide the service and all the hardware. But basically, the reason why I'm telling them, they should go ahead and ask for it if it's in their budget. It's because when we go live in December, they dead in water, if you don't. And they already got it, it's in their budgets, they approve, you know, it's their budget for it, the money's there, but I'm telling her to go ahead and ask for it.
So my question is, did y'all, did y'all budget the money for, is it budgeted for?
Yeah, yeah, we are discussing.
So what y'all?
Do we have money for it? It's, there's difference between having money for it and budgeting for it. It's two different things. I mean, it doesn't matter, you gotta have it if you gotta.
Yeah, if we have to, um, I think we got ten more questions.
I mean, you gotta have it, cause dispatch can talk.
That's what I'm saying, along with this budget for, we did, yeah.
We have to get it out of opioid fund.
We're supposed to be under emergency purchasing right now, so we can conserve, I'm not telling you all that.
Yeah, but, but this seems, we don't have a choice.
So we.
You agree?
I, that's why I asked a question for y'all recommendation. You know what I'm saying, before we make decisions, cause I understood where the county was. Uh, at the end of the day, I understood where the county was, where the county budget was. And we responsible for the county budget, knowing that things gotta happen. And I know everybody don't see what what y'all see. We rely on y'all to tell you, I mean, see if the money is there. I mean, at the end of the day, we wanna do everything we're supposed to, but if you don't have the money, you can't write a blank check. But at the same time, we gotta figure it out, because in December, like the sheriff said, when he go live, nine one one won't be there. So it's something we need to figure out, cause it's something that's gotta happen. The sheriff, nine one one, police department, fire, that's that's some of the basic uh, things that we provide. The folks that we have to provide to them, so that's all I'm saying, that's, we need to work this out and get that moving forward.
Just for the record, five weeks, I already agreed.
Yeah, well, I just wanna.
So what are we doing right now?
Oh, you mean for nine one?
For, yeah, what what are we doing right now?
They on that same system that I was telling you, they can't be updated anymore. There's no more updates, can't do nothing technical with it, it's about to die. Everybody's on that system except for the police department, but the police department is going with the same system that we're going with. So we all can communicate interlocually, like we'll be able to see everybody once from here. deployed.
So you're gonna count thirty five thousand now for the sheriff department, thirty five thousand.
Eighty eight thousand.
He's already requested out of forfeiture.
Yeah, ours already paid for, so you ain't gotta, ours, we paying for ours, complete it out of four for two money.
You won't pay for hers out of four for two months?
But 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 we could if we had to.
You pay for it out of the bonus?
No, that's not what I asked. Oh.
We got other stuff, we we.
Y'all know you gotta wait for this, but you know, oh, oh. Y'all work the county field, that that's forfeiture money, we need some of it, I mean, we all gonna be using. Oh, unless there's some law say no. It's special, it's special thing they gonna be using for, so, but it's drill season for it, it's not one of them corners you just tap into like this. It's not. Okay, does she need it? Scott, does she need a a a motion to to get that system?
It's in her budget, she does.
Okay, okay, you don't need it, okay.
You need just your doctor's.
We're just gonna have to figure out where it's gonna come from. And we'll we'll figure it out from one of the, one of those funds, whether that's the the seizure money or the uh, opioid.
All we can just hook to theirs.
I'm gonna have to defer to the lawyer on that one, Sheriff, I I I don't know. She know that man just told on that Zoom Friday, so she know what that man said. He he said all the man be separate, as we told us on Zoom Friday, so that's why I'm waiting.
Well, well, why do they have to be, are they separate now?
Well, that's cause they piggyback, but moving forward, going to the cloud base is gonna be different.
So what man you talking about?
The owner of the company.
The salesman.
So he trying to make money?
Trying to sell.
Is he trying to make money?
That's what that is.
Because if 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 it's on the same thing now and it worked for all these years, I mean, I don't understand.
They got a whole different terminal from the sheriff office. Nine one one is set up on a whole different N C I C terminal from us. Mary, if y'all don't agree about it, we can. Okay, is that, is that all of them?
Yes, it's all of them.
Who's next? Me. I do have a couple of things, I just wanna get some clarity on some things. Now, I know she just, I know Ms. Hudson just asked about that payment that y'all, that y'all approved for making that, uh, that payment being made. For the the needs assessment, but I didn't, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't. In a correct. I thought it already been, I thought.
Five thousand y'all planned for the sixty eight?
No, no, has it been approved?
No, has it been for payment, Ms. Washington, I talked to her last week about that, that they involved, she got it on. She didn't get it on to be paid.
I'm just asking so I can be clear.
It should be on this doc, docs.
Alright, so it's on this doc?
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing I was gonna ask y'all is, um, it ain't, it ain't my problem, like I had to ask you, cause it's affecting us all right now. I don't know if y'all hired somebody else with Justice Court or not, but right now the constables are having to type up their own uh, paperwork to go out and serve papers. We can't finish this needs assessment right now, because we can't get the data from Justice Court, because I guess she working by herself. I don't, that's what I'm being told. I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, but if that's we get her somebody to hire, that's the only, that's the only piece we're waiting on.
So they don't have no employees down there?
To to finish this. They got two. I I thought we approved uh, uh, somebody at the floater, if they weren't doing anything, to go down there and help them out.
Wait a minute, I thought it's three employees down there.
One quit, they had.
One no quit?
They they struggling bad and just affecting the rest of us right now, I ain't, I'm not saying.
Uh, uh, some uh, clerk?
Do, no, we we just interviewed people, how do we, how do we?
No, we hired for that office.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we interviewed them.
Right, we had, we do the hiring too.
So we need to put out a uh.
Appetizer.
Appetizer on the web. Unless we have somebody, unless somebody has somebody in mind and has some experience.
That's a question. Uh, hey, how long person with them?
Did she met with y'all that day?
Oh, I thought, but I thought there was still three in there after that. With with Rhonda, it's three.
Burn's three.
That's what I'm saying, it's three in there. We said we was not gonna hire nobody in our place. Yeah, but we said we was not gonna hire nobody, cause there's three already in there. So, I mean.
I don't know, it just seem to be a backlog, because. I got a, I got a complaint from the constable yesterday. Okay, but there you go. I'm just saying, I know we we struggling, because we can't get this last piece of data that's needed, because they just can't seem to get it done. So if we had access to it like that, we would go in there and dig it ourselves, but we don't have that, so. What do I want, because I don't want anybody to say we going in there deleting the changes and everything. We just, we just need what we need, so we'll just keep trying on that thing. Um, I'm gonna ask the board to get permission for for the net to apply for a thirty thousand dollar jack grant. It doesn't have a match at all, it's through home and security, so I'm asking for the board's permission for us to go out.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any need, motion carried. Alright, and the last thing I have, um, I know we talked about Enterprise in the last meeting, and I know it's definitely been conversing back and forth with 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 uh, Enterprise. Do you have any like, no select cars or are we approved to get cars or what? I know you gave a budget, but I'm not trying to use it that much, I promise you I'm not, but I'm just asking, do we have permission to go ahead and try to line up something or what? No.
I think they just wondering, Mr. Sheeran.
They wait on me. Alright, Ms. Washington, look, I'm look, let's see the big old Jesus smile, I promise you, I got you. Okay, they waiting on me again, I'm gonna leave it alone here. That, I just need to know, because I ain't wanna go and send them, we not gonna use, but we are gonna get what we need here. And it's well being, so I'll get back with y'all. Okay, thank you. Thank y'all. Anyone else? Any public comment? Alright, round the table. Mr. Gray?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, I ain't got that much today. Perfect example of I did a ten and that's just high homecoming ten event, whatever that was. And uh, I done been to all the corner, I've been to a whole lot of places. I know this is a little small place, but them people had some people over there and it's supposed to get bigger from what I'm hearing. And from what I read in the newspaper, they made thirty six thousand, I think, in one night. That's awesome, thirty six thousand in one night. Me personally, I think the other two schools need to do the same thing when they have homecoming, try to get their people that used to go to the school to come home from homecoming and 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 have a big event like that. Everybody won on that but us, cause we don't get nothing. The city of matches gonna get paid, the school district gonna get paid, but the county don't get nothing. All the hotels was full, uh, the grocery stores, some of them, I mean, what what they was over there. Men, they act like they ain't have no more stuff to serve. That was a big event in this community and uh, and I'm taking my hats off to uh, that's how whoever uh, put that together. And at the end of the day, we really didn't, they didn't have no incidents that go down with all those people. That was amazing.
Just for the record, Ricky, uh, on homecoming at at A C and Cathedral, I think, they now have a tailgating.
Yeah, that's.
Where they put tents up and stuff and they they'll they'll celebrate the fiftieth year, like the B C this this time of of a week or two ago, fifty years. And it it there were a lot of people there for that, so that that was pretty neat, the way they do that.
Uh, the only, I try to tell people, I'm not with the city no more, cause everything happened in the city and it. And really, the only one complaint that I got, and I guess the city is working on, because you got people haven't been here for a long time. And they start riding in areas, riding over Thompson and people thought the city still owned the Martin Gym. And they was complaining about the grass ain't being cut and all this kinda stuff. But like I told them, I don't think the city own Martin and they got a plan in place to deal with uh, cutting abandoned property. From what I was told, but other than that, it was a great event. And it was amazing that the young lady mentioned Nellie, Nellie's house, because it was on my list, cause I passed through that the other day. You couldn't even recognize Nellie's house. They done did some remodeling and got it painted and it's white, burgundy and white or whatever it is. It looking real nice sitting up on that hill, so I. They done did some remodeling and got it painted, and it's white, burgundy and white, or whatever it is, and it looking real nice sitting up on that hill, so I guess, uh, he gonna start on the inside, that, that was a great project for Mr. J T Robson.
He's, he's a good guy, and he, yeah, he's done a fantastic job over there, instead of being just a burned out house.
Uh, I saw in the newspaper where the rodeo, they had an evening out there, and I, I, I read the comments from the young lady that is from here, but she lived in Baton Rouge or somewhere. And, uh, I think we might have a jewel with that rodeo out there, because, I mean, so many kids now is getting into rodeo, and I had to find out, I think it's a junior college or another college that actually offer scholarship for rodeoing, so you know it be, and, uh, I'm gonna have to find a way to find that out for real and put that information.
Magnes.
Magnes State.
Magnes? Okay, because, because you got rodeo, young men and women, uh, they want that scholarship too, uh. I'm, uh. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, um, wanna break some stuff up, and, and it need to be said, because it, it affects this board and it affect this county. And I'm, I'm just gonna ask uh, the board, if possible, it's just my opinion, if possible, we need to refrain from personal attacks. I'm telling you, it's crazy stuff being said out here in the community, and we got a lot of positive stuff going on, and this, just my opinion, uh, uh, we not gonna always agree on something, we don't vote, and once the vote over with, then that need to be over with, we need to move to the next issue. My thing is this. I feel that we do have a good board, and we, and, and we diff, we not the same, so, but the personal attacks, everybody lose. We lose, the community lose, everybody lose, and I just think we need to refrain from it. Uh, even when it come to dealing with the garbage, and, uh, it ain't where it's supposed to be, uh. I listened to the city meeting, and they done changed, uh, who picking up my garbage, and they missed my garbage for three, two weeks, and, and that was cool, ain't nobody say nothing. And, uh, the whole deal is, we, we gotta have, we got a problem, and the other thing I'm saying, this board need to come up with a solution to the problem, not add fuel to the fire. So, we got a problem that we need to address, we need to find a way to address it without getting personal. Uh, I been here a long time, and I, I, I try to leave my feelings at home when I come up here, because, uh, I'm working for the people. And, and I gotta do what's best for the people, to make sure that we try to move Adams County forward by any means necessary. Uh, my last thing is. Now y'all know for a fact, I don't care what it is, I, I studied with our, steadily come to city and county government, and we need to be real, real careful. Uh. Especially with dealing with conflicts of interest. Now. They got laws in place to tell us that if there's certain things we can't do, if it's involved in our family members, and we gonna get a benefit from doing it, we need to refrain from even having that discussion, and people on this board know what's happening, and, and, and we just got to do better, I mean, I ain't calling out no name, but we just got to do better, because I ain't, I ain't trying to call out no name, but I will if I have to. Uh. My obituary. The Bladen family, the Terrell family, the Turner family, the Fry family, the Brown family, the Davis family, and my good friend from Wilkinson County was sitting right back there the other day, the Alderman Jean Lofton pass. And, um, I don't know when they gonna have this service, but that was a good friend of mine, and, and, uh, it was crazy, called him a couple of days, he ain't answered the phone, next call I got, they finally did in the house, so my prayers go out to his family, and I don't know if you heard me supervisor Gay, but, uh, Natchez High made so much money that the tent deal sold out everything, and everybody benefited from it, but, uh, we don't collect sale tax, so what we need to do as an association of supervisors, we need to steal lobby to try to get sale taxes in the county, because other than that, I don't know how we gonna be able to compete, because every year somebody sixty-five not paying taxes no more, and we ain't getting nothing from these companies that located here until ten years, we gonna be raising people taxes every year, I don't know how we gonna compete, that concludes my report.
Well, we stopped that practice about the ten years, but anyway, okay, uh, Ms. Hutchins.
Okay, I wanna reiterate on what supervisor Gray about the tent sec, uh, tent, uh, celebration over there, homecoming tent. Uh, it was great, um, I did walk over, um, because my daughter came home forward, she participated in it because she was one of the Natchez High, uh, participation. And, uh, you're right, uh, we gotta do something, they did good, uh, I went to the grocery store, I couldn't even cook that day, pretty much, because meat, all the meat was gone, it was a sellout. So, uh, that, that was a good thing, you know, that wasn't a bad thing, that was a good thing, and like I say, the hotels was booked and everything, so, uh, the city, I mean, they did make money, and I'd like to congratulate, uh, Chef, I'd like to commend you all for doing a great job on that. Y'all handled that good, y'all took care of that, and made sure that, you know, it was peaceful, and I'd like to also commend the superintendent, Zander McDonald Green, because when I walked over, she was working, she was literally working. I'm not kidding, that's first superintendent I seen out ever, she was riding a, a roller court, carrying people backwards and forwards, bringing them in, I mean, she worked, so I commend her for that, great job. Um, next thing, uh, I have is, uh, I'd like to invite everybody, and this is for the community, this is just not for the Lagrange, uh, uh, community, it's for everybody, it's for the whole community all over, to the Oktoberfest on October the twenty-sixth, which is just Saturday, it's starting at twelve o'clock. That would take place, uh, we got a lot of entertainment that's gonna be there.
You gonna be there?
Uh, of course. Of course, that, that's my thing every year, and we also have Congressman Thompson coming to, um, yeah, that's it, Congressman, yeah, I'm gonna be there for that too. Uh, Congressman Thompson, that's gonna come out and speak, so, uh, it's gonna be a great event, everybody come out, invite them to come out. The next thing, uh, I have is, um, I attended a, uh, community stakeholder meeting on October the tenth in Jackson County. And I say it was packed, the road manager also attended too, I asked him to go, because it was a good meeting, uh, it was packed. Uh, they had, uh, USDA there with good information, and also D R A was there also with a lot of good information. Um, I wanna say, if there's anything that we need to submit for USDA, USDA projects, we need to submit it, because if there's any match, D R A would fully match that. And they the only one that can match, you know, any project, so, uh, Sheriff, they had a lot of good, great things there that you could submit, and a lot of things that we need to be submitting. I think, uh, Robbie talked about some things that he would like to have taken care of, and he meant the film, and I think that.
They even mentioned rural waters, like, Abbot Gaddy water in that line, on Morgantown Road.
Right.
I told them that.
Yeah.
But D R A, if there's a match of anything, uh, D R A would match it, so, that's something that could be submitted. Um, and I think that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Gay.
Alright, uh, well, I just like, look back at the last two weeks, and I just actually like to say, I think Natchez as a whole, I don't wanna leave out anybody, because when you get to calling out names, departments and stuff like that. I was realizing, you know, everybody tied rodeo to me, because that's what I do, and, because I actually do, just drove back in last night from the L R A found, that new road, thank God, wasn't put out, I would have had. But, we had our first annual rodeo, Sheriff. I know you didn't make it, you was tired, uh, probably tied up or something, but we had the Southeastern, uh, Rodeo Association that came in, that's what the first major rodeo association, because on November second, they actually having a, uh, finals in Piscopo, Florida, and, you know, that's what a lot of guys from Natchez, cowgirls and cowboys participate, I mean, they follow my way to St. Louis, Missouri, they follow the Illinois, they had the one in Jackson, they had the one in Baton Rouge, they had the one in Lake Charles, so that was the first big rodeo association that came in here, and I want you to look at that, because I do want you to consider using our Adams County facility for your sheriff rodeo. I want you to consider that, it helped people, everybody, uh, complimented on the great job they had, and, uh, so I did that, but back to the people, we had homecoming week. On this past weekend, we had balloon race, and you know, no major he-cups, and that's a blessing, from where we been in the last couple of years. That's a blessing with this stuff, I mean, we had school districts, I mean, we had just normal people, and no major he-cups, and I just wanna thank the citizens of, of Natchez, and thank them for going out, having a good time, and realize, just like we started a trend, we need our trend back, to create family, friends, safe environment. So we can bring our family out of the joy and take, you know, those things, we don't have a lot in here to do, and it's a shame that things had got so damaged that we couldn't come back out. So that says a lot for our sheriff and police department, that you make the community feel safe enough to come out, and I applaud y'all for that, but, uh, uh, and what I do wanna say, as far as our board, yes, I do understand, I say it all the time, we are definitely different, we definitely have, uh, different mindsets, but if you look back at what we have done, we have still made major strides, and, uh, we have got a lot of things improved in our community, and we still getting a lot of things improved in our community. And so, you know, conflict is a part of growth. Sitting in this seat made me realize that, how you resolve conflict makes a difference with what people see. I mean, I don't think at some point, from supervisor Gray, supervisor Hutchins, supervisor Milton, supervisor Wilson, special old Turner Scott Slow, that military step to Washington, and I know we can go back sitting out there in the RZ grin, road manager Robert Dollar, even the sheriff back there, we all have had some difference, because I will speak up for what I think is right now researching. But when it's over with, I'm back to the table to work on the next project, and I wanna commend our board, despite what it pay. Go back and look at the accomplishments that we have accomplished, go look at the table of the things that we have in the future, and I want to say, uh, it's a good job, and we looking forward, it is some things that we can improve. It's a mistake that we gonna prove, but I feel like we will improve them, and we will do a better job for our citizens, and we will, I know for me, I will definitely respect each and every one of y'all, uh, to the furthest of my extent, and I do have that little lever, now don't pull it over, because then we'll flip over, and I think we won't, we won't do that, I won't flip there, I think we will all work together to make it better for Adams County, and I thank you for the job that y'all have did, working together so far, and I do thank you for the job we gonna do in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gay.
Yeah, I've had a vacancy on the pork commission for quite a while now, uh, the prior, uh, appointee for District One passed away, and I got with, uh, Turner Slager over the past couple of weeks, and with a, with an option, he's reached out, and we're pending, uh, approval from the Ethics Commission, which I think we're not gonna have an issue at all. I'd like to appoint Chandler Russ to that position, and, uh, pending that approval.
This is a motion. A motion by Mr. Milton. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any nays? Uh, that motion carries.
That concludes my question.
Okay, Ms. Page.
I don't have any.
Nothing from Ms. Page, Ms. Lewis?
I just have one item, I just need to have the September tax relief settlement spread across the minutes.
Need a motion, Mrs. President, tax relief, state council. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays, motion carried.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slager.
We had that email for Times, our provider wants to meet, did you have a chance to look at that? Who? Uh, the Metro, the garbage provider, sent out a few. Yeah, November six, seven, eight, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
November six, what is?
Six, seven, eight, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
I, I emailed you this morning, you might not have seen it yet, but, I mean, I think they need to come on the eighteenth at our next meeting. My opinion.
They got the eighteen on there?
No, but.
Well, we, we do have one on what?
Well, their, their first available wasn't until after our first meeting on the fourth.
We sent them out later, four months ago, so, um, I think they.
So we with the Friday date, sixth. I'm just trying to avoid special call meeting.
Yeah, I don't want that either.
So keep your news back out to them, Scott?
Fourth of the eighteenth.
I don't know, but at the end of the day, we need to get it resolved.
Fourth of the eighteenth, Scott, does that work for y'all, on one of our meeting, meetings?
I don't know.
I think everybody's.
But what we don't.
Give them the choice, fourth of the eighteenth.
And we don't need to do it what we did, everybody, we got enough issues, we definitely don't need to get up here and then we have people start making, um, other comments like some of them made today, we got an issue, we know we got an issue, we need to get it what we can straighten the issues at hand without dragging everything down, we, we already know what we need to deal with, if you put everybody in, you have a long drug out there.
Oh, yeah, we're.
We, we, we need to take care of that.
But, but we know what they need to do, or, and they need to tell us if they can do it, and, and.
I, I thought we was gonna meet with them.
Well, I know they said.
Tell them without concern.
So, you know, uh, so other words, it had to be a, okay.
Not, not a public forum, we're announcing, or, or, like the public too, if they wanna come, they can come, but they're gonna be quiet unless we call them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna ask him at the fourth or the eighteenth for work.
That would be nice. Well. Okay, Ms. Washington, you don't hear it, okay, uh, I got a, a travel voucher for, uh, Judge Danny Barber to go to the Biloxi for, uh, uh, conference, I need a, I need a.
So.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gaines.
What the date is?
Um. That's the shirt sitting right here in front of me, I don't see it.
I'll wear it back.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure. It says ten, that's when it's, it's a reimbursement, okay, so it's a. It says tense. That's when it's a reimbursement. Okay, so it's actually a reimbursement. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. All right, all right. Okay, uh I've got a letter from Natchez Adams County School District uh in the presenting uh wanting parents to sign up to read. Uh it's called greatest K through six spectacular reading festival thirty-first of October. Uh students with one absence, a ninety-eight percent attendance record or fewer than two tardies can dress in a favorite character or wear a costume, no no exceptions. Locations K through six schools, time eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM. And you can volunteer to help them with that if you like. Okay, talking about the fire uh coordinator a while ago, I just really think it'd be a good idea. This is just my opinion that we let the, try to get the city uh fire investigator to work whatever fires we have cuz he said, he said he's got one maybe every two months that he has to investigate. And if they've got a competent fire investigator, which you really need, that would be great. And we could have a part-time fire coordinator probably and save fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars a year. Just my two cents. Um okay, my garbage was on there, but we kinda kinda answered that. Uh cuz I I I didn't know what their what their plans were. Um the the strange conversation with the lieutenant governor, oh if he's gonna give us some money, I'm I'm happy. We can get a road fix that really needs to be repaired. I wish we could do both. I asked him about that and he said you're pushing. And I'm like, and this is me backing off.
You sure they ain't the fine though now they put that.
I actually called Phil Bryant this morning and asked him where this money might be coming from, just that cuz because he was the lieutenant governor. And he he said there were several funds that they they have available and can use it at their discretion. And and so I guess because we were in a meeting, it just dawned on him that his grandmother's from Adams County he wants to help Adams County, I believe is the the way that went down. Um okay, Scott, have you seen an invoice from BASF? Or heard about it?
From who?
BASF. They're the 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 largest port uh customer.
B?
BASF. Big, one of the largest companies in the world. But apparently, things got really bad at the port. They shipped our port. There was a shipment made, and I'm not, I don't know the countries exactly. One was supposed to go to Thailand, another one was supposed to go to Vietnam or somewhere. The orders were swapped. So they had to transfer the orders after they got there to the different locations. Cost seventy-two thousand dollars. And I I think they want the port to pay for it, Adams County. I'm not sure. Um I had a meeting with them. They've asked me for a meeting. I'm gonna, I want somebody to go with me. Uh if if anybody wants to. No, the B A BASF, cuz they're thinking about pulling out of port. Um because there's so many things going wrong down there.
Well, that's if that's the case, the poor commissioner or somebody need to go, they need to be at the table.
And they they've already talked to all those folks and uh nothing's getting done. It's just.
But but uh I don't know, Scott, help me if I'm wrong. From from what I understand about the way the ports set up, we approve their budget and their director's salary, right?
That's correct.
Okay, what else we gotta do with it?
You appoint your.
Commission. So I I'm trying to figure out what role do we play unless we change uh uh the way they do business down there cuz we don't, we don't give them no kind of money. I I don't know.
Well, that's 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 that we don't give them money. They should be giving us money. There should be money being made down there for a lot of money. But uh I I don't know what's happening. I know that everything is down there is broke. Interfap can't move their stuff, the crane, both cranes are broke. So now Interfap then are making, you know, fifty million dollar parts. They have to be moved from Interfap through the port and put on a ship or whatever, and it can't be moved to the cranes now. And this has been going on for a long time, eight or ten weeks. Uh matter of fact, they had a hire crane. It cost them, I don't know, a hundred twenty thousand dollars to bring a crane in to move what we should have been able to move. So it there there's a lot going on down there. We we talked about, well, Anthony said he might, he's gonna retire. And and we're we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do. Are we gonna, are we gonna privatize the port or look into privatizing the port? Uh and 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 figuring out if they're gonna pay us a monthly stipend and tonnage or how that works. And the only way we're gonna know that is to talk to talk to people that knows something about it, whether it be the guy in Vidalia or the guy in uh Warren County that that they're running those ports. Uh but I I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention that there's an invoice out there. And I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Oh.
I've never, I don't, this is the first um.
I should and and I should have made a copy of it till it was sent to me, uh just to show what happened. Uh and and they're they're not happy. Oh, yeah, I'm sure they've already got it. We've said and heard about it. But we do not need them to try to pull out of port. Okay, um I wanted to make y'all aware, uh especially parents of students to go to A C and 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 uh Cathedral. Uh and I wish um I could get somebody involved with 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 the high school too, if he if this guy has time. He's a nationally renowned speaker. Um Tony Hoffman is his name. You can Google him. But he's coming to both schools on the thirteenth. He'll be speaking at A C at ten-thirty and 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 Cathedral. At twelve-thirty, yes, sir. Um uh and he's gonna, he's gonna tell kids a little bit about his story. Uh which short version is, he was on his on path to go to the Olympics racing BMX bicycles. And um somebody talked to him in the smoking joint. And his his world went straight to hell from there. He ended up, I don't know if he went to San Quentin or where he ended up in prison for robbing his grandmother at gunpoint uh for opioids. Uh that's how, that's how bad it it got. Apparently, he had addiction in his family and didn't know it. And that one one joint, people don't think that marijuana is a gateway drug. But anyway, he made his way back thanks to thanks to a black man that was willing, finally, after months and months and months of him begging and beginning his Bible class, he finally said, one day, I think you're ready now. And he he got in in that and he he accepted the Lord. And he decided, I'm going back to the Olympics, so he started training again and getting in shape and 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 all that. And they they laughed at him. And um when he did get out of prison, he continued to train. And he was almost to the point where he was going to go to the Olympics again. He blew a knee out. And it, he crushed him, but because he had gotten his life, he was able to work through that. He became a trainer. And one day, he got a call from a young lady and said, coach, we're going to the Olympics. So he got to go. But his his story of 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 how easy it was to get addicted to drugs and he's off, he will also talk a little bit about working in as well, which seems to be a nationwide problem uh these days, especially with girls.
What what is it? Banking?
This wasn't bullying.
Oh, bullying.
Yeah. So anyway, uh Dana and I met this guy a couple of years ago and have kept up with him. And like I say, you can look him up on uh uh Facebook or uh uh Google and Tony Hoffman and listen to part of his stories. But he is now a professional speaker and so he's coming, he's coming to Natchez. I think it's gonna be a a a big deal. If I can get with somebody with Natchez High that might wanna do that, if y'all wanna talk to somebody, if he has time, I'm sure he would agree to speak to them. Uh both schools uh picked up their speaking fees through some kind of federal grant that they have uh to pay for a speaker like that. So uh that was nice cuz we we thought we were gonna absorb all the costs, but that that worked out good too. Um so I just wanna let y'all know that was going on. Um and I I think that about concludes my report. Do we have any anything else, Mr. Slager? Would y'all like to get out of here?
Hope we reach this.
I need a second. All in favor?